Hello, everyone. It is such an honor to welcome you to Freddie Pusa's virtual campaign kickoff for Culver City Council 2020. My name is Carol Costello and I will be your M. Can you hear? Any of you, this is the first time you'll actually hear from Freddie, right? So. He's just an amazing person. When I left CNN, I landed at LMU teaching journalism. And my husband is also the president of LMU. So one of my duties is First Lady, which is a strange title, but that is one of my duties. And that is my title at LMU, First Lady. And one of my duties is interacting with the community. And Freddie's the guy who brings our community and the university community together. And he is, he's like the best listener I have ever met. He listens to you intently. He has this way of making you feel comfortable, even if the topic is not very comfortable. And he cares, like he genuinely cares. And today, I would say that's big because kindness, kindness goes a long way. And in Freddie's world, there's still something called integrity and compromise. We love him at LMU and I certainly love him as a friend. We have a packed evening full of amazing speakers who will speak to Freddie's character, leadership and humanity. But before we get into that, I'd like to go over some brief ground rules. You know, that's my role tonight, ground rules. So everyone, listen up. Everyone will be on mute except for the assigned speaker. So I'm going to say that again, everyone will be on mute except for the assigned speaker. If you have a question. At the end of the meeting, if time permits. If we don't have time to get to all of the questions, do not worry. Freddie will answer them as soon as he can. He'll answer them through social media and he'll certainly hold many more meetings just like this and answer them in person. You can also use the email in the chat box to set up a Zoom call with Freddie. And I know we're all a little Zoom fatigued. I know I am. So I promise we will be done no later than 7:45. So grab a drink, grab a snack, sit back and let's begin. Our first speaker is Dr. Kelly Kent, who is an educator, parent volunteer, and former city commissioner elected to the Culver City Unified School Board in 2015. After earning a neuroscience doctorate from USC, Kelly co-founded Adapted Consultants where she provides brain-based teacher and workplace professional development, parent education, student enrichment. Kelly also has an extensive, extensive experience as an undergraduate and graduate neuroscience. And she's a psychology instructor as well. Wow. Please welcome Dr. Kelly Kent.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay, good. The second that she was reading my bio, which I was also really overwhelmed by because it's one of those outdated ones that you use when you're newly elected. My daughter comes in and she's like, I have to talk to you. She's 12 and because when she's 12, it's urgent and pressing. But, but we staved her off for a few minutes and I'm super, super, super psyched to be part of this launch, Freddie. I'm very honored to have been invited to speak and I'm already feeling very moved. But I do, I do have some particular words that I'd like to share to get us all in the mood. I thought maybe I'd talk a little bit about how Freddie and I first got to know each other. He came to me because he actually wanted to support my work, trying to build housing on school district property for school district employees and Culver City community members. So, you know, he sought me out to talk about housing in a setting that has really no direct connection to his work in life, right? He doesn't have kids in the district. He's not staff in the Culver City Unified School District, et cetera. But, you know, he cares about housing and protecting housing unstable people and preventing more people from living on the precarious edge of month-to-month life, right? And that's when I really knew that I had the privilege of getting to know someone who was both a thinker and a doer and would seek out solutions, right? Because he was thinking ahead about where are the needs and then acting on them? How can he support in a manner that really supports those needs? And so he didn't ask me to highlight this part, but I'm, I'm just going to tell you something because it's also about the personal connection that, you know, I knew I loved Freddie. And I'm going to apologize if other folks are going to talk about this later, but I have to tell it from my perspective that I knew I loved Freddie when I learned from him, but also from a shared friend that we have in common about his work with AWARE, which is white people holding each other accountable for anti-racist work and an anti-racist future. And that let me know right away that he's willing to bear a burden to be part of the undoing that needs to be our current imperative. You know, he's not, he's not willing to let it just be other people's work because it doesn't, may not impact him directly, right? He's owning his role. And that's important because in this time, we do really need to be better at centering voices of color. We do need to, to, you know, be sure that we are doing what we can to support and lift up those voices. But we also need to lift up the co-conspirators. And I'm obsessed with this term right now because it's from Dr. Bettina Love. And I've learned about it more recently. The idea of co-conspirator versus ally, right? So co-conspirators, they're going to put their own social capital on the line because the social capital of white people will continually be renewed. So she talks about it being like a debit card, right? That you can use it to make a withdrawal when the time is right, but also over the course of the long game, because it is a really long game. And his track record in this town has shown that. It's very impressive in a way that really communicates that commitment that also it comes from his values. So he served on the homelessness committee in Culver City for three years before he was appointed to the General Plan Update Committee, which by the way, is tasked with reimagining the next 100 years of Culver City. He's been an active participant of the group Culver City Renters, which is working to protect renters in an environment where as many as 100 CCUSD families that are renters have been pushed out by the lack of affordability in, in any one year. And that's the lens I'm looking through very often because I'm on the CCUSD school board. He's worked with Culver City Action Network. He's worked with the Culver City Community Coalition. He also took the Leadership Culver City Course at West LA College and facilitated the community conversations promoting civil discourse in Fox Hills. His list of community level engagements is very long. And none of these even pay testament to his longtime commitment to attending and advocating at council meetings. He's been a voice in favor of disrupting the status quo consistently now for a couple of years at these meetings. As I said earlier, Freddie is willing to use his social and now political capital, because now he's about to be a politician, y'all. He's willing to use his social and political capital debit card, right? That's Dr. Bettina Love, to take risks, to fight for a more just community because it's what's right for the bigger picture, for the larger community, for the shared world that we all should be fighting for together. And that's why I know I want Freddie to be our next partner in progress, our next council member for the city of Culver City. Boom, boom, boom. Pass it off. Go Freddie. Love you.
Thank you very much, Kelly. Thank you so much. I think it's safe to say that Freddie invests much time and energy into the Culver City community, right? And he's certainly done that at LMU as well. I want to go into a little more detail about what he's, what he's doing at LMU and what he's done because it's, it's quite amazing. He co-founded the LMU chapter of the Alliance of White Anti-Racists Everywhere. He served as the president of the Staff Senate, the co-chair of the LGBTQ Faculty and Staff Network. He's worked as an implicit bias facilitator. To speak more on this, I want to bring in Dr. Jennifer Abe, who serves as Vice President of Intercultural Affairs in Psychology. She's also a psychology professor at LMU and she happens to live in Culver City. But in her role at LMU, Jennifer helps create and sustain an institutional culture and climate characterized by diversity, inclusion, equity, and equity-mindedness across the campus community. Jennifer received her PhD in clinical psychology from UCLA, where she trained with the National Research Center on Asian American Mental Health. Here's Jennifer.
Way before the protest began in this moment. Hi, I'm Jennifer Abe and I've been a Culver City resident since 2001. My kids have gone through the Culver City schools and I'm really proud to be part of Culver City. I'm also really proud to endorse Freddie Pusa for Culver City Council. I've known Freddie in my work as Vice President for Intercultural Affairs at Loyola Marymount University. And I've been a professor there of psychology for many years as well. Freddie is one of the founders of a group that's called AWARE at LMU. AWARE stands for the Alliance of White Anti-Racists Everywhere. And it would seem that this would be something, especially in this moment, that a lot of people would be interested in joining. But Freddie's been doing this for years, way before the protest began in this moment. He's been committed to work of justice and to building community and to building solidarity across groups. He's done that on campus as part of the LGBT network, helping build community. And he's, he can do it in the city of Culver City. So I'm really proud to endorse Freddie. I think he'll be a great city council member and I would encourage you to vote for him too. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer. I just want to make sure everybody can hear me. Okay, good. I'll take that as a yes. Thank you so much, Jennifer. That type of intercultural work is so important and relevant, especially right now. And because, you know, more cities are realizing that this work isn't optional. It's, it's kind of critical when it comes to policy decision-making. I always hear Freddie share how important he feels about, you know, how important he feels the arts are and what a vital role they play in our society by offering a reflection of our collective values. So with that in mind, next up, we have Shannon Theis, who will perform a spoken word piece. Shannon, who also goes by Ziggy, is a trans media artist and political advocate. She is the Los Angeles Coordinator of the Black Spectative Arts Movement, the Recording Secretary of the Culver City Democratic Club, and a delegate for California's 54th District. Please welcome Ziggy.
Hi. Okay, could you hear me? Yes, I'm assuming so. Okay. So because Freddie's favorite writer is James Baldwin, here is "The Darkest Hour." "The darkest hour is just before the dawn. And that icy, which does not guarantee power to draw the next breath, nor abolish the suspicion that the brightest hour we will ever see occurs just before we cease to be." And in regards of being a brother's keeper, especially in a world where you are marginalized and you still understand you are your brother's keeper, here is "Mirrors" by James Baldwin. "Although you know what's best for me, I cannot act on what you see. I wish I could, I really would, and joyfully act out my salvation with your imagination. Although I may not see your heart or fearful wellspring of your art, I know enough to stare down danger anywhere. I know enough to tell you to go to hell. And when I think you're wrong, I will not go along. I have a right to tremble when you begin to crumble. Your life is my life too. And nothing you can do will make you something other than my mule-headed brother." So "Some Rules From the Way," by Tal Teiching, translated by Ursula K. Le Guin. "Well-planted is not uprooted. Well-kept is not lost. The offerings of the generations to the ancestors will not cease. To follow the way yourself is real power. To follow it in the family is abundant power. To follow it in the community is steady power. To follow it in the whole country is lasting power. To follow it in the world is universal power. So in myself, I see what self is. In my household, I see what family is. In my town, I see what community is. In my nation, I see what a country is. In the world, I see what is under heaven. How do I know the world is so? By this." The next poem is by me. It's called "In Order to Co." "In order to cope, we're going to need some hope and we'll need to grope the whole scale of the scope. When the system broke and the whole slant of the slope bends, I need good folks and I'm gonna need some dope friends, willing to go when no one wants to go there, willing to know when those stay unaware, willing to show what was set you right, throw it up, willing to decode, distribute out and expose. For problems to be eradicated, egos must be abdicated. We survive, we thrive, all sentience emancipated. We abide in tribes, all tribes will be tolerated, nature entwined in lives while technically sophisticated. To boldly go when no one wants to go there, willing to know when those stay unaware, willing to execute certain tasks resolute, willing to extract back away, fade to black." And the last but not least is called Freddie Pizza for City Council. "Of sound body, of sound heart, of sound mind, I hereby go. And where I will stop, only the muses shall know, for I am inspired to a higher cause, to progress the land and reform the laws. And when uncertainty warrants me to take some pause, I'll have my community rooting me down through the halls, offering oversight, proffering a clause, buffering opposing might, enriching my gall. So blessed is the crest, no matter definite or doubtful, as I begin my steps toward city council."
Hello, everyone, and good evening. Can you hear me? Good. My name is Donna Gray and I am delighted to be here this evening to welcome all of you again. And thank you for joining us to, in some cases, support Freddie and in other cases, learn more about him and why he wants to do even more for the city of Culver City. I've known Freddie as a colleague and a friend for over 15 years now. And so when I say, and I think you're going to get a theme here, when I say that he is a man of principle, which almost always translates into action, I say that from my heart and from deep experience. I'm not surprised, but I am inspired and encouraged that a person of, of character like Freddie's, a person of determination, is willing to invest even more of himself, to do even more for the common good. At LMU, we call that the Magis. And Freddie is a living embodiment of this. What I also love about Freddie, and again, probably a theme here, he's totally willing to check his ego at the door. How many of our politicians can say that? I think we need more like Freddie. I'll be frank, I'm here because I'm a fundraiser and campaigns cost money. Freddie's campaign isn't going to be flashy, but it's still going to cost. And so I'm here this evening to ask you to join me. Yes, join me. I've already become a donor today and I'm hoping you'll join me with a gift that is within your means, whatever that means. There will be a link placed, I believe, in the chat function of the platform that you can click through and you can always go to his website and do the same. And I'm going to ask you to really vote with your dollars right now. And if not tonight, then tomorrow, but sometime this week, because those dollars are really going to make a difference and they add up. If all of us here this evening contributed something to Freddie's campaign, the campaign would be off on solid footing. And those dollars, every single dollar can be leveraged in the days, weeks and months ahead to get him to that success line in November. So please vote with your dollars today, tonight, and then vote again in November for Freddie Pusa for Culver City Council. Thanks for listening and thank you, Freddie, for doing what you're doing.
Thank you so much, Donna. You know, Freddie believes youth are the future and he loves working with young people. He's inspired by their vision and convictions to create a better world. Freddie met our next speaker, Adrian Naraya, on an alternative break trip at LMU. The trip gives students an opportunity to learn about a social justice issue, you know, kind of what Donna was talking about in the Magis. The trip they went on was in Tucson, Arizona, and it focused on immigration. Freddie and Adrian continued working together until Adrian graduated in 2018. And they've continued their friendship. Adrian currently works for US Congress member Katie Porter. Please welcome Adrian.
Thank you so much, Carol. I appreciate it. It's such a great honor to be speaking with you all here today. Just for some background, I'm a 2018 graduate of Loyola Marymount University. And, you know, during my four years at LMU, I really had extreme pleasure of meeting a wide variety of individuals from different backgrounds, different cultures. And in doing so, I had the capability to really hone in a strong network of mentors, of peers and professors. And, you know, one thing that truly I took away from LMU was Catholic social teaching. And one of the driving principles of Catholic social teaching is being to serve as brothers and sisters and siblings within for others. And, you know, I had the great privilege of meeting Freddie in 2017 when I attended that trip to Arizona. And, you know, this trip, as Carol mentioned, was such a huge eye-opener to understand a lot of major issues that are affecting everyday Americans, right here also, here in Culver City. And I'm not going to lie, I remember the first pre-trip meeting we had for that trip we had to Arizona. And I walked in, you know, I'm like, great. Yeah, yeah. What we definitely need is another white dude telling me on one of these trips. So I'm not going to lie or sugarcoat it. I was definitely stereotyping. But, you know, I could, I'm, I'm standing here today because I attest to the fact that I couldn't be any more wrong. Freddie has been, you know, what Carol said, one of the most intentful listeners that I have ever met. And, you know, ever since I met him on that trip, he completely broke all the stereotypes. I mean, he was such a great facilitator. He was able to make sure to check everybody, check himself and make sure that there's a safe space for everyone to feel included in order for the youth and all the students that were on this trip to feel engaged, empowered, and also create that safe space that's necessary in order for all of us to speak up. And also moments when we just want to sit and listen. And if there's one thing I've learned from Freddie, it's that. And so throughout the entire trip, there was not one instance that Freddie did not shy away from having those difficult and often uncomfortable conversations, you know, that we all have to be able to sit down each other and sit down at the table to have these sort of discussions. And, you know, in doing so, we were able to really figure out ways to bring this knowledge that we gained, going to detention centers, learning more about the plight of immigrants through our immigration industrial complex and bringing that back to LMU. And it's at LMU throughout my last two years in college that I had the great privilege of having Freddie as a mentor. And he has been such a great mentor, not to only me, but a lot of my college friends, peers, and a lot of people that are still working in staff and faculty at LMU. There's never a conversation that I've had with anyone that I, that also knows Freddie that has not been anything but in a complete positive and bright nature. That's just a character of who Freddie is and the person that I'm so glad to call mentor. His ability to help engage the youth and stay connected has been definitely something that I'm even learning from. Sometimes I feel like I'm older than Freddie, even though I'm 24. So it's definitely been great having as a mentor. And just to wrap up, you know, whether it's helping to advise the first black woman to serve as a president of Harvard Medical School or help elect and work under the first single mother in US Congress, you know, I can't put into words how excited I am to help work with all of you to help support and elect the first openly gay elected city council member here in Culver City. So with that, thank you so much for having me and I'm so excited to be here.
Thank you so much, Adrian. Thank you so much. I feel our future's bright, right? After that conversation with Adrian. On the subject of the future, we have a very special treat for you now. As many of you know, Freddie has three godchildren and one by proxy that he loves and adores. He takes the role of godfather very seriously. So I'd like to introduce Kristine Nangle, who will share a special surprise message from Freddie's godchildren. I can't wait for this. Kristine?
Thank you, Carol. Thank you so much. You know, I am phenomenally blessed to have been best friends with Freddie for the past 15 years. And I cannot tell you how lucky I am and blessed that he is part of my family, truly part of my family, that my son thinks that he's actually my brother. But it's not just me. It's all his godchildren consider him a part of the essential unit to function. And we are so grateful. And I'm sure like many of you, Freddie has played in a very significant role in your lives as being part of your community. But I think that I am so lucky to have him as a best friend. And I thought instead of me telling you about it, that I would show you video from our children showing how proud and how much they love their Uncle Freddie.
Michael Frey's the best uncle in the world.
Hi, Uncle Freddie. You're the best uncle ever.
Hi, Uncle Freddie. I love you.
I love you because you play with me a lot and come over to my house.
I love when you play with me.
He spends time with me, loves me, cares about me super much.
He always takes care of me. I love him. Big hug.
And that's why he's the best uncle in the world.
Uncle Freddie, I'm super proud of you.
I'm so proud of you.
You're the best uncle ever. I love you.
So I think, I think the children said it better than I ever could, but I just would say that we, I know I speak for Beth, Debbie, and myself. We could not have, we, our children are beyond phenomenally blessed to have Uncle Freddie as part of our lives. And we support you, we love you, and we will always be here for you. Thank you.
That's adorable. Get those kids on the campaign trail right now, Freddie. It's awesome. Freddie met our next speaker through their involvement in the Sokkakaka International, a Buddhist organization which they are members. They've known each other for over 15 years and served as co-leaders of their district for five of those years. Vanessa Shaw is a prolific film and television actor. Her breakout role was in the film Hocus Pocus. She has also appeared in Lady Bubs, Eyes Wide Shut, The Hills Have Eyes, Three Ten to Yuma, and the Showtime drama Ray Donovan, just to name a few. So please welcome Vanessa Shaw.
Hi, and thank you, Carol. And oh my gosh, Freddie, how am I supposed to follow your godchildren? They're so beautiful and amazing. Anyway, forgive me, I'm reading my speech because I'm not that Zoom savvy. I barely got this thing up. But anyway, thank you so much. I'm so honored to speak on behalf of my, my, my dear friend Freddie and support you, Freddie. When I think of Freddie, a warm, fond feeling enters into my heart. And I'm sure, as many people have said here, and anyone who knows him personally would say that they've felt this same fondness. Throughout the years, I've, I've watched Freddie mature as a human being, but most importantly, as a capable leader. I met Freddie in 2005 while we were both youth volunteers working behind the scenes for our Buddhist organization, SGI, an organization that stands for peace, culture, and education. Our purpose as young volunteers was to support the membership and making sure their meetings ran smoothly. Some shift required us to work many hours, sometimes outside in the hot sun, greeting people and ensuring their safety. At the end of the shift is when you can usually tell if someone's grasped their purpose that day, if they truly poured their heart into caring for others. And this was the exact moment I met Freddie, at the end of his shift. He was smiling from ear to ear and looked so relaxed, like someone who just came from the beach. He seemed so unruffled by any of the difficulties he may have had through this shift, which is a very strong quality that Freddie still possesses to this day. About five years later, I was paired with Freddie as a co-leader to support the Buddhist members in our local neighborhood organization. We were responsible for creating discussion meetings where the members could freely talk about many topics online from a Buddhist perspective. At one planning meeting, there was a suggestion to allow for more discussion, which required us to restructure our agenda. And at first Freddie was pretty rigid about the change because it seemed like it would be too hard to moderate such a long discussion. But because he's such a good listener, as most people shared, he went on with what the membership requested, and it worked. And he shared with me later that he really enjoyed pushing himself to think outside the box for the sake of the others. One of the important things that Freddie taught me was the significance of reading the president of SGI, Daisak Leketa's Peace Proposals, which he has sent to the UN every year since 1983. In them, Leketa calls for soft power on issues regarding human rights, the environment, and nuclear abolition. Freddie is one of the only people I know to read these lengthy proposals. They are sometimes 40 pages long in order to glean an understanding of how to be a person who advances a more peaceful society. This is just the kind of dedication and sincerity I admire in Freddie. His heart is always in the right place, ready to learn from others. Over the five years I got to work with Freddie, got involved in many groups such as Fierce Pride, our LGBTQ group in SGI, supporting info booths and marching in the pride parade for six consecutive years. He's always been a strong supporter of women and has looked to women as his mentors. As a woman, I always felt he treated me as his equal and his true partner of our team. He seemed to always ask my input first before sharing his. And whenever I needed anything, he would be there. And he would always volunteer to help me with the boring tedious stuff that nobody else wanted to do, like calendars and logistics. And he was always there for our fellow members. One time, I hopped into his car to drive all the way to Long Beach, something that many LA drivers would complain about doing. And we drove to watch one of the members of our team graduate college. As a black woman, it meant a lot for us to celebrate this milestone with her, since she was the first in her family to graduate with a higher education. As you can see, for many people in SGI, Freddie is our rock. Don't let his soft spoken demeanor fool you. Behind this stillness is a lion that will always listen and give voice to others. And he will never be swayed by fads or trends because he's solid inside and always fights for what's right for the greater good. He's always reliable, always dependable, and pretty much always smiling. In the end, Freddie is the type of leader I would vote for. I hope you get to know him like I have, and I'm so proud that Freddie is using his voice to act locally, something that all of us as American citizens in this day and age have been asked to do. So now's the time to get involved in your local community or just vote. And when you vote, vote for my dear friend Freddie. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vanessa. I think you really spoke to the type of person Freddie is and the relationships he creates. And this will be an important characteristic as Culver City Council member, who will be required to work in concert with all of the city's regional partners. Freddie's already started building these relationships, including with our next speaker, Lindsay Horvath. She's the mayor of West Hollywood. Mayor Horvath was first elected to West Hollywood, uh, West Hollywood City Council in 2015, and previously served as a council member for two years from 2009 to 2011. She has a long history of civic and social justice advocacy, including creating the first ever Community Response Team to Domestic Violence, spearheading policies to make West Hollywood an age-friendly community to better serve residents of all ages, and serving as the Global Coordinator for One Billion Rising, a global campaign of the VA Day movement to end violence against women and girls. Please welcome Mayor Lindsay Horvath.
Thank you so much. Everyone has prepared such thoughtful remarks. And I just want to speak from the heart, so I hope that's all right, because I just love this man so much. My life has been made infinitely better by gay men. So Freddie is absolutely one of those gay men. Thank you for all of the ways that you just bring joy and light and hard work and thoughtfulness and clear intention to everything that you do. I remember meeting Freddie and, more importantly, getting to know his work through Stonewall. And it was clear he wanted to, to get involved and to eventually run. But he wanted to run at the right time, and we've been talking for some time about why he wanted to run, what his service looked like, what he wanted to accomplish. Because I've seen a lot of people who want to run and shouldn't be running because it's not the right role for them. There are so many different roles that we can all play to change our communities. And so we, we talked a lot, and we really explored why he wanted to run, the kind of work that he wanted to do, and what about this role in particular would help him achieve the goals that he has and the ways that he wants to build community. And I think that's why I'm so excited for Culver City, because he has been really intentional in planning this run and planning how he wants to be of service to his community. And, and I think rather than, you know, people who are like, I'm gonna sign up for this or do that and make sure my resume looks like it's right. He is just rolling up his sleeves and doing the work day in, day out, whether it's with specific organizations or, as we're hearing tonight, just in his personal interactions and the commitments that he makes to other people. And I think that's the kind of transformational leadership we need in this moment. Somebody who really connects on a human level, who listens before they speak, who keeps an open heart while, while listening, and really seeks to understand the situation of the person with whom you're engaging in. And Freddie, I'm just so impressed by you and how you, how you bring people together to have a conversation, to be in community, and to accomplish goals. And so I'm hopeful that you are going to be somebody I'm able to work with in the region. We are, our cities are in the West Side, cities cogged together, so there are opportunities, we get to work together regionally, as well as, and you know, in organizations like the, like the California League of Cities and others. I know that Culver City is, has been going through and will continue to go through some really important changes, and it raises a lot of questions about what community looks like, what it means to build community, and, and what changes are good and not good for our community. And I know that you and I have been talking a lot about those too. And, you know, what do you want to see on your ballot? What do you, how do you want to help bring people together around those questions and educate people about, you know, what's going on in the community and what role they have to play? Because we all have a role. Some of us are on the inside of City Hall, but we need everybody else on the outside of City Hall to be just as engaged to help us get that work done. And I know you are going to be not only an ally, but an accomplice on the inside using, using that system and structure to make the transformational change that needs to happen. And you're also going to be, you know, somebody that people know will listen. And, you know, be the person that helps them navigate the bureaucracy to get the things done that they need to get done. And a lot of people have been speaking on a very high level, which is super inspirational. But I also know that you just know how to, you know, like, get a permit, help people know where they're supposed to park, and do the basic stuff of local government too. And, and you can't, you can't overstate how important that is because that's, that, that may be the one opportunity you get, the one shot you get to show somebody in your community that City Hall really does work for them. And I know that you're going to be able to work on all of those levels. And, and I'm so excited to be supporting you. I'm so excited to be invested in your campaign. I encourage everybody to invest your time, your talent, and your treasure in this man in this time because it's cluttered, it's loud out there right now. And so cutting through the noise to make sure his message gets out there is going to be really important. So I know you can count on me to support you on this journey. I'm looking forward to all the talks we'll have along the way. And I'm so excited to see all of the people who are on this Zoom campaign kickoff. You are supporting or getting to know an incredibly amazing man, and you will be so, so grateful and happy to see the leadership that he brings to Culver City and I'm sure the region. Congratulations, Freddie. Super excited for you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Horvath, and thanks for all of the work you're doing in West Hollywood. So Freddie told me it was a game changer when our next speaker agreed to endorse his candidacy. Councilmember Daniel Lee was elected to Culver City Council in 2018, and he's here to endorse our Freddie. Daniel?
Thank you, and apologies for joining late. I was wrapping up a class that I was taking. I'm gonna be really brief. I will say to start, it was, it's very encouraging to see the number of people here and to hear sort of the intimacy of the stories that people are sharing. There, there are a number of things that I could talk about in the context of how Freddie has been involved with the community in Culver City, from his involvement with Community Coalition and C Can to protect Culver City Runners and the Culver City Historical Society and the Culver City Democratic Club. His various roles with the General Plan at Varsity Committee, of course, his role at LMU and his job. And then, of course, outside Culver City and Stonewall Democratic Club and the LA LGBT Center and the West Side Pacific Villages. But the one thing that sort of resonated with me and the one reason that I was very, I hope not too encouraging, when I heard Freddie was considering running for city council, is that a lot of times when politicians run for a particular position, they talk a whole lot about how they will be there for you. How you can elect me and I will be there for you. But when, when I spoke to Freddie and he told me what he was considering, what I remembered was Freddie being there before we even had any type of conversation around political ambition or the Culver City City Council seat. And that is the type of leader and the type of person that I want to have as a colleague going forward. Not someone who will tell you what they will do, but someone who has a very strong track record showing up for sanctuary city votes, for polystyrene bans, and particular on Monday, when we were considering reallocating our city's budget to rethink public safety and Culver City and to try to address some of the historical inequities that our country is plagued with, but which Culver City is not immune to. Freddie was there, and it's very encouraging. It was very easy for me to say yes to endorsing Freddie and yes to endorsing Freddie early. Because if you've gotten to know him even a little, and I admit, I don't know him nearly as well as many of the speakers who spoke prior to me, you, you get this sense, you understand there is this sincerity that you feel from him, married with an intelligence that tries to use his innate ability for empathy to come to a really logical, policy-based solution that will help the broadest amount of people. And that's what I really appreciate about Freddie. It's something that I, I feel like I sensed when I first met him. But when I've seen him speak at council meetings and at subsequent Culver City Democratic Club meetings, it's something that's really, really sort of settled in my brain and is one of the, you know, innate things I think of when I think of Freddie Puzza. In addition, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that I was very happy to see someone from Fox Hills running for city council in Culver City. It's a neighborhood that it's been historically underrepresented or unrepresented. Though Freddie is not an African-American person, I, I, I do believe that he really has a gift for empathizing, has a really innate understanding of, you know, the the litany of oppressions that our society still needs to address, and in particular racism. And the, the history of Culver City and the disenfranchisement of Fox Hills, primarily due to race and it being historically an African-American neighborhood. And I know he knows how to stand with this history and in his own whiteness and still work towards addressing some of these historical inequities. I'm very, very happy that Freddie is running, and I will do all I can to get him and one or two other progressive candidates elected this November. And I hope all of you who haven't donated will donate now. And if you have, you'll consider, you know, adding a little bit to that pot. But I'm very happy to be here tonight, and I wish you the best of luck, Freddie.
Thank you, Daniel. Thank you so much. I really also respect the courage of your vote on Monday night. And thanks to everyone who spoke today. It means the world to me. It feels like a giant birthday party, so thank you. And thanks to Carol for emceeing. You were the perfect person for this job. My godchildren mean so much to me, so thank you to my sister Beth and Christine for sharing that video. It's good to see all your faces, even though it's on Zoom. You know I love people and wish this was in person, but at least it's something. A year ago, I would have told you Culver City was already at a major turning point. The city had just begun the general plan process, then the COVID-19 pandemic hit, followed by the horrific murders of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Ahmaud Arbery, and countless others, which erupted in a city and nationwide call for equity and protests against police brutality. I'm running because these unprecedented times call for unprecedented leadership. In the past few years, I've seen more progress in Culver City, and I'm running to continue on that path. The status quo doesn't naturally evolve. It's no secret that Culver City is torn down the middle right now on issues of policing, public safety, housing, and the environment. I'm running because I listen and bring people together. We need to gauge and engage in authentic conversation and rely on data and research, then create solutions that work for the best for all of us, that address structural racism. And if something doesn't serve us anymore, immediately let it go. And I know what you're thinking, more and more listening to format. But I'm a man of action who gets things done. I believe this can be done even in a polarizing environment. I first moved to Fox Hills in 2011. I was drawn to the city's vibrant growth, great location. It's only four miles from where I work. I love the parks, the bustling downtown, the great restaurants, the amazing people. Culver City is the heart of the creative economy in LA County. I care about the city I live in. My dream for Culver City is to be a resident of Culver City. My dream for Culver City is for it to be a model city. But that won't happen on its own. It takes smart and creative leadership. Many of you know me, and for those of you who don't know and you've heard already, my day job is at Loyola Marymount University as Associate Director of Community Relations. So that means I work with neighbors, local business and government on various strategic initiatives and projects. I've worked there for 15 years and I received my master's degree from there as well. As Jennifer mentioned and a couple others, Kelly, I helped start the Alliance of White Anti-Racists Everywhere at LMU. Um, this is part of a larger network. But the group has members who it's their first experience talking about structural racism, and members that have been actively involved in these conversations for many, many years. We were just invited to present at Georgetown. It was canceled due to COVID-19. But I help call people in to have dialogues and difficult conversations. I'd like to share one of the main experiences that really shaped my political consciousness. Growing up, I always heard two things would be impossible. The first is that there would never be a black president, and second, there would never be marriage equality. It was such a historic moment when Barack Obama won, but it was also bittersweet because Prop 8 passed. But as we know, marriage equality eventually became the law of the land. But the most important lesson I learned is that when I hear someone say, "That can never be done," I don't buy it. If elected, I would be the first openly LGBTQ candidate or council member in Culver City. It's an honor to launch my campaign during Pride Month, but this is just not a box that can be checked. That's tokenism. It's about visibility and affirmation, which leads to more trust in and participation in the political process. I obviously occupy other identities. As a white cisgender male, I have to consistently check my privilege and my blind spots. This is vitally important work, especially when it comes to policymaking. And this is not some nice thing I'm doing. It's essential work that we should demand of all our politicians. So here's the work ahead of us. Every year, more Culver City and Los Angeles residents experience homelessness for the first time. We must protect renters, provide thoughtful, affordable housing in strategic areas, and usher in essential services to help people achieve personal stability. As your council member, I'm committed to ensuring all residents have a fair opportunity to live a healthy and dignified life. Transportation and mobility are local problems that require regional solutions, but there are things we can do. Culver City is quickly becoming a destination city. That will require bold and thoughtful transportation policies to ensure our current communities continue to enjoy the Culver City they know and love, while making the most of the evolving opportunities that allow our city to grow in the direction we, we desire. In 25 years, I don't want my grandchildren, my godchildren, to come to me and say, "What kind of world did you pass on to me?" Culver City must do its part to reduce our carbon footprint. We need to ensure that the city's commitment to end oil drilling is carried through to completion and that we reimagine that space. The budget reflects what a, a city truly values. As we look ahead in the coming months and years, it will require tough decisions. Equity and inclusion are my highest priorities and will be the lifeblood of any tough decision I'm required to make. Everyone wants to feel safe, be protected, and treated fairly. I believe this, the best way to create safer neighborhoods is to invest directly into the community. This can look many different ways: stable housing, mental health services, and increased community-based organizations. I'm so eager to explore options toward a reimagined budget that accurately reflects our values. The election in November will be crucial on so many levels, from the president to our senators and assembly members, to the LA Board of Supervisors, and yes, to city council. I'm asking you now to make a donation to my campaign. It takes money to run a campaign. And your donation will allow for more activities like tonight and beyond. If you can give the maximum contribution of $1,050, it would do incredible service to my campaign. If you could do $10, that donation also goes a long way. My campaign is going to be funded by you, the people. As was mentioned, today is the first day of the exciting journey towards November 3rd. There will be many opportunities to engage and discuss more about the issues, so be on the lookout for follow-up emails of how to get involved and learn more. And I'd be remiss to not mention my dad. Many of you know that he passed from cancer earlier, uh, this year. Not only did we share the same name, we shared the same passion. We didn't always see eye to eye, but that was the beauty of our relationship. The loss I feel for him is, is very real. Even in hospice, he would brag to the nurses that his son was running for city council and how proud he was. I've given nothing more to have him here tonight, and I know he is here in spirit. And I know that he would personally thank each and every one of you for supporting me and being here tonight. And with that, uh, I'm going to conclude and thank you so much.
Thank you, Freddie. Um, thank you so much. That was just awesome. I think we have time for just a few questions. So you mind, Freddie?
Sure, like one or two is probably good. Yeah.
Okay, so here's one that's coming in. What do you consider the top three issues in Culver City right now?
Great, yeah. Well, as I mentioned, I think policing, housing, public safety, um, which is tied into policing, and then the environment. Um, and also on July 4th, the Culver City Democratic Club will be hosting a picnic. And so, um, we'll be able to get into those issues more deeply. But I've made a lot of public comments and you can go to my website at www.fredypooza.com, um, to see a little bit more about my issues. And there'll be many more events where we'll have a little bit more, um, formal or informal time to really dig deep into these issues because they're very, very important to me.
So, uh, here's another one. Um, and, and you know, this is intriguing because, you know, you have to raise this money, but you also have to campaign during a pandemic. So how will you be able to reach people? What will, what will campaigning look like in this time?
Yeah, uh, day by day. Um, we are in a whole new world. The other part of this campaign is that's the first time that this election is, the municipal election is consolidated with the general election. So as Lindsay was talking, there's a lot of noise going on right now, a lot of campaigning. So we'll really rely on social media, um, virtual, I want to do a lot of listening sessions on Zoom. If it's possible to go door to door, depending on the public, uh, cap, uh, the county's advice on, um, on that. I do it with, you know, obviously adhering to physical distancing practices. And yeah, it's just going to be a lot of one-on-one and a lot of endorsements. And people like all of you will be doing phone banking, um, text banking, um, and all of that. So it truly is going to be a day-to-day kind of process.
It'll be challenging, but if anyone can do it, you can. So I'm going to wrap this up right now. And just to remind people, if you submitted a question via chat, Freddie will be glad to answer that as soon as possible. And also you can go to his website and post questions on social media. And there'll be more, um, events like the one we're having right now where he'll be able to answer more of your questions. And with that, I'd like to thank all of you for being here. So go Freddie. We believe in you and, um, you're awesome. Thanks to all of you. Go Freddie Pooza!
Thank you. Thank you again, um, all the speakers and the Carol for emceeing. And we, we got out in time. I know everyone's zoomed out. I know I am. So thank you so much for your attention and we'll see more of you later. You're all part of the team now. Thank you.